...the workshop for May 24th, 2021. And calling Kristen Rush to do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor President Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I move to excuse Councilmember Pfeifer and Councilmember Simpson.
Motion to excuse. And that passes five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Devon, we have one workshop item tonight. Do you want to introduce that?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are following up on previous work that we have discussed with all of you regarding metro districts. We have our team here. That includes Ryan Stachelski, Brian Archer, and Brad Maloney, who will make the presentation. I believe we're going to start with Ryan.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. Thanks for having us. As Mark mentioned, Brian Archer and Brad Maloney will be presenting. But we also have guests in the audience, Kim Crawford and Dalton Kelly. And they are attorneys working with us on kind of reviewing and understanding draft ordinances, best practices, and the things that are going on in metro districts. So when we get to the Q and A section, which you can ask at any time and you ask a hard question, we're going to probably defer to them.
You're going to ask a friend, huh?
Yeah, we're going to ask a friend. They're really the subject matter experts. We, as city team members, are able to talk about, where we've been and kind of the business case and kind of the Arvada culture around these types of things. But understanding what's going around other areas relative to the metro districts is a really important aspect of this work. And so we're grateful that they're here to support us. We are going to go to the next slide, please. And this first slide is actually going to be presented by Brian Archer. And it's going to talk about, a little bit about where we've been and what our current ordinance talks about.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about metro districts. Like Ryan said, this has been kind of an ongoing project for us for a long time. Metro districts predate what you see up here, certainly go back many, many years, and have changed throughout time here in the city. The most recent ordinance was adopted in 2007. And the city council at that time really wanted to frame what we felt like, what they felt like, metro districts could be used for. And so they came up with four policy, what they felt like metro districts could be used for. And so they came up with four policy considerations. You can see them listed on the slide and like to really talk specifically about regional infrastructure and what that means. So part of that definition became difficult, obviously, as we've moved on throughout time. Also, half a mile inside of a designated rail stop located in redevelopment area and meeting green build program are pretty easy to identify. And so that's where we sit today. Certainly, one of the things that we're working on is redefining the service plan. And that kind of helps set up metro districts. And we'll hear a little bit more about that here in just a minute. And then finally, this is, these are the four measures that all of our metro districts are measured against today. So if you can meet these criteria, you are then eligible to create a metro district. Next slide, and this will be presented to you by Ryan.
So when we're thinking about metro districts and we're thinking about kind of the evolution and the next steps, we want to be thinking about best practices and about how to carry metro districts forward. And we look at that in the context of an ordinance and then a model service plan. And a model service plan is something that you have a draft of that in your workshop packet tonight. And it gives you some examples of some policy directions that we'll want to get your feedback on and where to go. When we look at the service plan, it's a little bit more of a detailed kind of listing of all the things that would be required of a metro district. And then depending on how that looked, then we could back into an ordinance and say, "Look at the model service plan for these items." But really, we're using the model service plan as the template for then going backwards into the ordinance based on your direction. But since the model service plan gives a little bit more detail than just an ordinance does, we felt presenting a model service plan was a better example to give you tonight. On this slide, we wanted to kind of do the lay of the land of how many metro districts do we have right now? What are we really talking about in the context of metro districts? So, some fun facts, as you guys know, I like to do. Sixteen active districts in the city of Arvada. They range in mills from a total of ten mills to ninety-two point seven mills. Mills are a section of property tax that you would pay on your assessed value. And of course, assessed value is assessed differently whether it's commercial or residential property. But that's how you would figure out your ultimate tax bill is how many mills are you paying relative to your assessed value. There are two types of mills that metro districts can issue. There's the mills for the debt, which is they're issuing debt in order to pay for some public infrastructure that is identified in the service plan. And then there are also operating mills that they can issue debt, not issue debt, but collect mills for, so that they can go, pay for the ongoing operation and maintenance of that infrastructure. And so oftentimes, we will see those two things as separate. As of 2018, there was a total of nearly $300 million in debt that was issued by these various metro districts to pay for the public improvements. There are roughly twenty, or excuse me, sixty-two hundred houses that live in metro, or that are within metro districts within the city of Arvada. And that represents about thirteen percent of the households in Arvada. Next slide, please. This is just a map. We do map all of our metro districts and we have that as a layer in our GIS system. So we just thought it would be interesting to kind of show, you know, perhaps not obviously, but because metro districts sort of developed later on in the development of Arvada and Arvada developed from east to west, we don't see metro districts on the east side of town, but see them more predominantly as you move west. And so that is probably no surprise to anybody. Next slide, please. So one of the reasons why we're here in front of you is that, you know, metro districts have been operating for several decades. And they've been doing so, I will say, somewhat a little bit under the radar. It has not been a lot of public comment, public scrutiny, although there has been some. But in recent years, we have certainly seen that ramp up. We, they talked about what is the process for creating metro districts? What is the level of debt that they should be issuing? How should they be issuing debt? And a whole number of other kind of transparency related things. And so when we were looking at updating the model service plan and the ordinance, what we wanted to do is make sure that we were focused on those types of items. And so the intent of where we're going with this model service plan is an attempt to identify and address these issues. Now, I should also point out here that we've been working on this for quite a while and going back into 2020 and even before that. But you're all probably well aware that the state legislature is currently working on some language related to metro districts and potentially having some legislation around that. And so when we get to next steps, we will talk about where we are with our ordinance and our direction from you and where the state is and the timing of those things. I will tell you that in the current information that's out there, that our proposals really mirror, you know, eighty, ninety percent of what the state is considering. So it'd probably behoove us to kind of wait to see where they land before we take next steps on ours and then also obviously getting your input. There's also legislation that has not yet been proposed, but we've heard rumors of as one does. And so we'd like to see what that comes out as before making any final determinations. Because certainly, we want to have anything that we do represent Arvada's values and where we want to be with this type of ordinance. But we also, understanding that the state through the Title 32 statute kind of dictates this, we don't want to do anything in contrast to that. Next slide, please. So these are the areas that we really want to focus on relative to, at a high level, relative to the service plan and ordinance. Regional financial contributions, transparency, accountability, and then issues related to mill levy and debt. If you go to the next slide, please. So one of the things that we've been talking about a lot, and this is actually something that we've been doing in practice, although it's not necessarily been in our ordinance, is that when folks, developers come forward and say they'd like to issue or start a metro district, we say, "Okay, we'll look at that and consider it." But we also want to look at the considerations around it. So what are impacts to regional infrastructure that this development may be needing to contribute to outside of what their, outside of what their infrastructure plan calls for? Things that the city is looking to do in order to negate or mitigate some of the impact of having that development. So most recently, with the metro districts of Haskins Station and Sabels, we asked for increased revenue to the city that needed to be spent in a specific way, meaning something that impacted that development that, within that service plan of the metro district, but had a broader regional impact. And so we did get some additional money from Haskins Station, Sabels. And then that money is intended to go to improvements around 52nd and Ward, 52nd Avenue, Ridge Road, that type of area that the Haskins Station development wasn't specifically going to do on their own. In this ordinance, what we're proposing is to look at that in one of two ways, or actually both. So we give ourselves that option. One is if we didn't identify a project right at the beginning to say we want to collect these funds, we could collect mills in addition to the mills that are being collected by the metro district or repay debt mills. We could have those mills come into a fund within the city and collect that money until a project was identified and use it at that time. Or we could ask for a lump sum of X amount of dollars relative to a project that needed to be done and go from there. Now, it's important to note that these mills would not go over the mill cap that they would have for their issuing debt, that this would be in excess of their mill cap. So they wouldn't count towards that. Also, in order to identify regional improvements, where we would articulate what is a regional improvement is that we would want to make sure that the improvement was listed in our CIP. So whether it's funded or unfunded, it's something that we identified and just kind of bluntly, we didn't just make up along the way. That we had a reason that we were planning for, that we understood that this was a need for the city. And that was a way that we could capture it and have that money go towards a CIP project.
Ryan, can I interrupt you right there real quick? So I have a question for you about the city's ability to require additional mills to be paid for the city to contribute the benefits. But in the case of where we don't have anything identified and we're just going to ask for an annual, I'm guessing, an annual payout on our, whatever mills are dedicated to the city. Do we feel confident that's not a Tabor, Tabor issue there where we're collecting tax without specific? I mean, I guess we're specific in saying it's for regional infrastructure, but without having regional infrastructure identified?
All right, so this is the time where I phone a friend. I want to make sure you get a really good thorough answer. And if I could invite Kim up to the podium and Dalton, you guys are welcome to come and answer that question. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kim Crawford from Butler Snow. It is not a Tabor issue because it has been voted by the metro districts. So they have typically a laundry list of questions that allow them to impose mill levies. And the mill levies can be imposed for debt or for operations or for ongoing debt. So they could, and for IGA debt. So you might have an IGA with them where they say they're going to pay you four mills. But it does need to be tied to something that's going to be a benefit to everybody.
Right, okay. All right, sounds good. I guess I wasn't thinking about it of, I was thinking of all those individual property owners, but really, the metro district represents all those property owners initially because there's not a bunch of property owners initially when it's formed. So they can vote with, I guess, at times, one person, correct?
Well, yes.
Right, okay.
Honestly, yes.
I seem to remember one in Aurora that was the Gaylord or something. There was one, one board member who was the majority, luckily for him, so he was able to be.
Yeah, I mean, at the time of the development, you have to own property in the district to be able to vote, and that's.
Okay, sounds good. The other question then I would have for Ryan, this is more of a city issue. In a case like that, if we were getting, you know, a couple mills on a metro district for future regional improvements, we would be just taking it, you know, I don't know how much annually that would be, but $10,000 annually or twenty, whatever it is, and letting it stack up until we had, or we can, then we can internally borrow and pay back with those mills or something? Is that how we would, how we would do that? It seems like it would just be a really long way down the road before we could ever really do anything if we were taking that approach.
It's possible. In some cases, if we were going to do that, it would probably be in a district that was growing. So we would take a little bit upfront, but as it continued to grow over time, then we would get a larger increase. And absolutely, how you described it is how we would account for it. So we would escrow the funds and identify them for regional improvements. And then once there was enough money, or we could match it with something else, then we would move forward.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones.
So just following up on that, what would prevent the metro district to say, "Well, then, if we're going to, if we're going to pay an increased mill for these regional improvements, then we want to say in what those are and how they're going to be developed and now we've got more hands on the plot?"
Well, to a certain extent, there is a little bit of that already. Because we cannot just choose any CIP project in the city. So, you know, I'll use extreme examples. So something in Leyden Rock. If they, they're not doing this, but if they happen to be paying enhanced mills. And then we identified something in, in South, in District Two, for example, as a, as a project. We wouldn't necessarily be able to use those funds.
So they'd be specific to the area of the metro district?
Well, not, not, not the metro district area, but I would call it maybe like an area of influence or something like that. So for, for example, the Haskins Station, you know, 52nd Ward is not within the Haskins Station's service plan or boundary, but it's certainly within an area that's appropriate. So what we've done is we've worked with their attorneys and said, "Hey, does this area, this regional improvement make sense?" And they said, "Yes, we've identified that as making sense because we believe that by making those improvements, it benefits the district." So there are other things in JCMD that may or may not be within the JCMD borders. But because it benefits the district, then it's okay. So the qualifying statement here is that, yes, we want to be part of the city's CIP plan, either funded or unfunded. But we also want to make sure that those taxpayers are paying towards something that benefits them, but just outside of that area, the district, but it is benefiting. The other thing that we can do is we may be able to cobble together different metro districts or different funding from metro districts to come together. As an example, whether this ever played out or not, I don't know, but the railroad on Indiana. And that being such an extreme funding burden on any one source, that if you could have funding sources coming from different areas and pull that together over time, you may be able to then cobble together to get enough money that way. And then that being viewed as being regionally significant and benefiting many different districts.
So you just answered my second question, which was going to be, "Can you give me an example of a regionally significant project?" And I think that fits perfectly. But again, and, you know, most of those districts are on the western side of town anyway. And so that makes sense. But I guess I would want to better understand, how do we, how do we communicate to the metro district really what this means and what their involvement is for an extra two mills or whatever it may be? And that you, I mean, are with, so I guess let me circle back. Does that mean that then they would have to approve the use of those CIP dollars that come out of their two mills? Or would they have approval, any sort of approval level in what the project ultimately was?
So I'm going to ask, well, Brad, do you want to answer or you want me to defer to Kim?
I think that.
Go, come on.
I mean, I think that the answer itself, and good evening, I think that the answer itself means that it depends. I mean, it's in their interest also to, to utilize the funding as well that has been designated for this purpose, right? So then, and we have a list of, and we're in the process of this in a couple of different locations within the city right now, talking with attorneys from special districts, trying to figure out, "Well, here's, here's a listing of basically what, what we have and what ideas we have." And it's, it kind of then falls to them, not to necessarily select and choose, but to be in a, to be in a situation to obviously advocate for their residents and knowing that the only way that money is utilized is if we can come to an agreement on that. At least, that's how it's played out so far.
No, and I certainly wouldn't want it to be an adversarial kind of a conversation, but sometimes, you know, that's just the natural path that people take because their concern is only for what's most important for them as opposed to what's most important for the regionally significant project.
The way, as, by way of example, the way that I've seen this play out in conversations that we've specifically had with Haskins Station, Sabels, and even to an extent, we're working on an IGA with JCMD right now for some funding that they're giving to us. And their primary concern is not necessarily how we spend the money, but that it is a qualifying expense. So they're not trying to get into the nitty gritty of saying, "Do this, do that." They're not really that level of oversight. What the oversight is, is we want to make sure that this is a qualifying expense and that we're not going to get in trouble with our bond council for having money spent in that way.
Okay. No, thank you. I'll, I'll yield my time to someone else.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Next slide, please. So transparency. To be perfectly honest, this is probably one of the biggest areas. And this is a lot what the state legislature is looking for. So for a lot of folks, understanding where a city begins and a metro, and a metro district begins and a city ends and those types of things is confusing. And, and some folks, when they move into certain areas, may or may not fully understand what it means to be part of a metro district and what those mills are for and what they're paying for. And whose responsibility certain parts of the operation and maintenance is for what period of time. And so one of the things that we really want to build into the service plan is a way to access that information a lot better. We just want to be able to have, for, for residents that want to ask the questions and do the research, we want that easily available and accessible to them. That's just so important for transparency, for accountability, and all the different aspects of when you're creating a quasi-governmental organization, you want them to be able to be beholden to their taxpayers and to the folks that are part of that district. And so making this information clear to everybody about how it's accessible is a really important aspect, we think, moving forward, and probably that's something that is lacking in our, in our current ordinance. Next slide, please.
Ryan.
Yes.
I have a question on that. Is there anything that's going to deal with resale of the property in a district to create more transparency, not only to first-time buyers, but also to, you know, future buyers?
I do believe that we put something in there about, so about disclosures moving forward. So I believe it's part of the purchasing process, that there are disclosures that you're in a metro district and what your taxes are and those types of things. So it should all be part of a closing document that would go through title from homeowner to homeowner. Now, I will acknowledge the fact that you're excited about buying your home and you get a lot of papers in front of you and you think of the purchase price of your house, but you don't always think about what the insurance is going to cost and you don't always think about the taxes that go along with it. So there is a personal responsibility of all homeowners to fully understand what they're getting into. But those documents are there. And then we also want to have websites and other things like that that fully disclose that information in addition to, that would be available to everybody in the public in addition to just homeowner. Our next slide has to do with accountability, and Brad's going to come up and talk about that.
Good evening. And Councilmember Ford on that last question as well. The intent was to have a model notice, basically, that would be then required and part of the package associated with a service plan. A model service plan, as councils are aware, is, or a service plan is what gives authority to the metro district as to what they can and cannot do, what they have authority to do. And so if there's a material modification, or if the city believes that there's a material modification that the metro district is making associated with that service plan without authority, of course, then we basically have placed into this proposal for a model service plan different steps the city could take. Basically, that we could end up cutting off cooperation in the development of the special district. We could file an injunction with the district court. And then we can end up going through any type of contractual type of causes of action for violating the IGA, which would then enforce it. Next slide, please.
Well, just real quick. So, and I think that's good. The challenge is, is that kind of circling back around to the disclosures and, you know, what we can and can't do and what people read and don't read. We could put big signs up too, and that doesn't work. So.
Touche.
So I think we have to, you know, really think through from a, you know, from a special, what did you call it? I've lost the word all of a sudden. But anyway, making sure that we've got the clear set of rules and guidelines that somehow we can enforce upon everybody to ensure that people are aware of what's really going on. So I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that most people don't read the documents or the signs.
Yes. And so, and I think that as to, as to the previous point, you know, we can only notify people so much or require others to notify people so much. So maybe we can pick the color of the paper, you know. Next slide, please. Oh, and then it looks like this is Mr. Archer's.
So we'll talk a little bit about proposed debt levels. And so what we're proposing in the current plan would be that the debt mill cannot exceed fifty and that the operational mill cannot exceed ten. Now, Ryan did make reference to some districts that are significantly larger than that today. Part of that related on the debt side to the ability to Tabor adjust. So as taxes on residential went down, they were able to increase the mill so you netted to a zero effect on your bond. And so that might mean you might need fifty-two mills one year and then fifty-six the next. Hopefully, as we move forward, that won't be the case, since that was removed by legislature last year. And then on the operating side, you certainly can vote to increase that in your own district if you'd like to. But this is the proposal that we would like to set aside to begin with. They are exclusive of each other. They are also exclusive of if, as an organization, we decide that we want to add mills to, instead of a cash upfront. Those could be in addition to these numbers that are, that's in the current proposed plan. And then what's really important is that we don't want this to go past its life expectancy. So if we're putting something on a twenty-five-year life expectancy asset, that's as long as we can let the debt go. If it's fifty years, it's fifty years. And we're not really running into that a lot, but you do get that opportunity to refinance. And then all of a sudden, you're forty years out, and what's the life of a street? We've spent a lot of time talking about the life of a street. And so where do we end up in that arena? And so we really want to be very specific around that and very pointed. Now, everything is reviewed by bond council and outside financial experts when they do all of that work. And we do feel like these boxes are being checked, but again, we want to be very upfront about it. Next slide.
Quick question before we go off.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted to clarify on the, the, those, the ten mills or the fifty mills for debt. Is that, what about those districts that are currently in place today? Is this a retroactive change or, so the mills that they may have in place today would remain in effect? This would be for new districts only?
Yes. I'm not, I'm not a legal expert, so.
Okay, because I know that that would specifically be a problem for Leyden Rock metro district.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Most of the metro districts today, that would be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
So really, next steps, that we want to take your feedback and incorporate it into the, the draft ordinance and the service plan. Once we feel like we're at a good spot, we'd like to share this with the community, obviously the builders and the developers, to make sure we're not crippling them in any way, and then get their feedback, and assuming city council is comfortable with all that, certainly bring it back to you for final approval, and get this implemented. So we're ready for all your input.
Mr. Marriott?
Thanks. I, I have a couple of questions that kind of weren't here, and we might have our metro district experts ask, be ready to answer a couple of these. So I've heard or seen, particularly, I think it was down in Colorado Springs, where there are actually metro districts on top of metro districts, or I don't know if, I don't know what you call that, stacking them together, or metro districts within metro districts. Would we be allowing things like that in our ordinance here? Potentially, or not potentially? And, and is there a reason to allow it, or a reason to prohibit it? I mean, I wouldn't regulate it unless we needed to, but...
Ask an easier question.
Oh, we have a caucus going on among the legal advisors.
You can tell me that was a terrible question to ask, and that's...
So, I'm Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow. So, the service plan doesn't allow to have a metro district inside of a metro district. What there is allowed under state law, and I don't think we've addressed yet in this, is you can do sub-districts within a metro district, and that would be like a special improvement district that you do within the city, or something of that nature, where you have a discrete need to do something in this area, you could do a sub-district. Some service plans don't allow that, some service plans do. That's something that's allowed under state law, and that's something that we can either have or not have. The benefit is, if you have a discrete need, and you want that area to pay for their benefit, then that's available to them, and it's not spread throughout the whole district. The downside is, if they're paying for that improvement, they're doing that on top of all their other improvements.
Right. And, and how about, is there any difference in a transparency aspect of that, if, if that were the case? Because it would, it's, it's no different than...
They'd still have to comply with the service plan, the sub-district. The real, the real benefit, and where we see it, are like water sub-districts and sewer sub-districts. Like a metro district maybe has a, a sub-district, or a district, and then they have, they create a water sub-district because they want to impose a different mill levy, because under the constitution, you have to have a uniform mill levy within your, your taxing district. So, so you can't have one block getting, being imposed 50 mills, and the next block being imposed 42 mills, if they're all within the same district. But if you create a little sub-district, because maybe this little district is getting different improvements, or more new and improved improvement, you know, different things that benefit just them, they can create sub-districts and tax them differently than the rest of the, of the development. But, but there's still, typically what we see is it, and I think we do allow for sub-districts, with, with your consent. So if a metro district does want to create a sub-district, they'd have to come back and ask you, and they'd have to present to you, you know, the need and why they're trying to do this. It would still be subject to the service plan, and it would still be subject to the debt, all the, all of the debt limits and all of the other provisions.
Okay. So while I have you up here, let me ask you a totally different question. Tell me, tell me a little bit about how a metro district operates from kind of inception to not end, but, but, but maturity, because when it starts off, it's one property owner, maybe, or two, or maybe five, or 10, and, and I would assume it's a majority vote of the property owners, whether it's one, or two, or five. And, and that, that's who votes to create the taxation and impose, set up the metro district, and, and the property owner is the board, or appoints people to the board, or whatever, and then as the district is developed, particularly like in the residential or commercial district, and property gets subdivided, and more people take on, then the new property owners start taking board seats on, and eventually, when the things mature, then the property owners within the district run the board. Am, am I correct in all that, in all that kind of stuff? So, is there any, is there, is it controlled by state law, as far as when and how that happens, or, you know, the things I've heard before are, are that, you know, the developers dictate all this, and then, and then in the end, they just say, okay, here you go, and out, out they go? Or is there something in state law that tells, tells when this has to happen and how it happens?
No, I think it really depends upon the development, and what's happening in the development. You know, under state law, the people who can vote, and who can hold board seats have to be electors. And if you're an elector, in the early stages, you have to have an, either own property, you or your spouse has to own property, or have an undivided, or contract for an undivided interest, or... So that's why the developers are the initial boards. They typically do approve all of these ballot questions that authorize the issuance of the debt. They usually, you know, issue it to construct the initial infrastructure. Once they start building, and some, and people start buying homes, those people can be on the board. They can run for the board. So, really, as development progresses, these people can become involved on the board. Where we mostly see it with bonds is for refundings, because they're, they're the board once the bonds have been refunded.
Right.
Other than, and then it's just subject to the normal timeline on elections, and so they can get on the board when the, you know, next election cycle for the metro district board is. That's, and that's part of what the new legislation is about, getting a notice out for when those are happening.
Okay. And, and those terms on boards are set within the bylaws of the board, or is that state law, or it's just like, just like ours? So it falls under state law?
Terms.
Right, okay. All right, sounds good. And then, I'm assuming the, the mills for debt, if, when that debt gets paid off, that, that then those mills just go away, they're no longer charged to the property owners, and, does that ever happen early?
So, we, we, the answer is yes. We do have a current district that's going to pay off early. It's very rare. It usually happens when the infrastructure is, is not very large. And so, the homeowners have reason to pay it off.
Okay.
Other than that, most of them run their life, and in many cases, get refinanced along the way. I mean, that's the big frustration with, with a lot of people, is, you know, that was a 30-year debt, and now it's a 40-year debt, and now it's... Yeah. And so, that's part of the transparency and, and those kinds of requests. But it certainly does happen.
Right, right. Okay. And then, I have just one last question, and that's, you know, I know we, within our ordinance, we'd say if, you know, you're providing regionally significant infrastructure, or payments, payments for infrastructure, we may find in the, in the, find out later, are, are there limits to what the city can, I'm gonna use maybe a bad word here, but extract from a metro district, and, 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 and things that they can be kind of used for? I know I was at a, a panel discussion, and it was, this was in another city, but they were talking about, you know, a, a metro district providing a daycare within the development, because that was miss, you know, a big community need, and so the developer was offering that through the metro district. But, you know, it seemed to me like a slippery slope into extraction from, from the future homeowners there, who, who, you know, you could promise whatever it takes to get your development approved, and then hang that on the, on the future homeowners.
It's a good question. We've talked a lot about that, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong here.
I, I, I'm just gonna add that...
Yeah.
They can't provide daycare services unless they're specifically authorized under state law to do that.
I think it was a daycare center, not the service, maybe not the service part of it, but the physical, I, I don't, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it seemed to me like a pretty slippery slope to, to, for that type of a thing.
Well, metro districts can issue bonds for certain purposes, and I guess if they are loosely defining public improvements as that, may, I mean, I don't know, that might be, again, a slippery slope or something, but, but I, I have certainly heard of developers offering to build schools. They certainly dedicate land, but they have to have spec, you know, specific authority to do that.
And I would offer, the, the real restriction is going to be the finances of the project. And so, like when we were talking with Sabel's and Haskins Station, it's really figuring out what the overall value of the project's going to be, that's how you set your initial debt limits, and then working underneath that. So, in theory, no. I mean, if, if you could sell the houses for an unlimited amount of money, then, then you could do whatever you want, but there's really, you know, a pro forma that kind of establishes all that upfront.
And Brian, in your...
That's an additional question beyond the last one that you were permitted. Go ahead.
[laughing]
Mr. Jones has been very patiently waiting.
Follow, follow up to the, to the answer, Mr., Mr. Archer gave. So, is, is that, in your experience, is that the way that, that they work, is that they come up with the number and then work backwards from, from there, versus coming up with what the, what the proposal is, and kind of work forward from there?
You know, that's probably more of a question for the developer. I'll let Ryan come up here, but I think most of the time, it's both, that you're working in conjunction with them, and really trying to get to a reasonable number. At least, that's my experience.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, we've, we've seen both sides of it. So we've, typically what they'll try to do is maximize their debt limit, but they don't necessarily always issue all that debt. And so, that's one way of, is like, well, you know, you can do $100 million worth of debt, but this is the amount of public improvements that we're doing now, and a lot of it is tied to making sure you can get the assessed value, in order to get the revenue stream to then pay off that debt. So if you're phasing a project, and you're building houses, or commercial, or whatever you're building, you're phasing your debt out, the issuance of debt relative to the phasing, and how quickly you can then get that up and running, so that you can get assessed value to get a revenue stream. And, and the, the bond councils and the folks looking at it are only going to let you go to a certain limit. But that being said, I'm also aware of other metro districts that had a, a debt limit of X amount of dollars, but when they went in years later, because they set it, maybe in the aught years, or in the early 2000s, they, they set it, and they did all their cost estimates, so they set their debt limit, well now they're building some 20 years later, or something like that, and the prices have gone way up. And so they have to look at other funding schemes, but their, their service plan only lets them allocate X amount of dollars in debt limit. So I've seen it go both ways, and, and really, it's tied to what are the public improvement needs that they have to get their project moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, thank you for your patience.
Are you sure, Mr. Marriott?
I think he asked a lot of Bob Pfeiffer questions.
So, I actually have a couple of follow-up questions, and, and a comment, and, so I think I only have two follow-up questions. So, going back to the, to the page where it says, debt cannot be refinanced past the life expectancy, if there was a refinance within the life expectancy, which again, happens from time to time, will any of these service plan requirements be attached to a refinance, or are we gonna try and claw back inside of a refinance to, to institute the service, the new service plan, or the new transparency around the metro district?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I mean, the service plan is established when the district's created, and it speaks to refinancing, and so at that point, you're just gonna go back to that service plan.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be a new service plan that would overlay on top of that.
And that's the answer I would hope you would have given, but I wanted to make sure that...
I'm not gonna look at the lawyers either.
Okay, and they didn't look at you, so it's good.
[inaudible]
And then, going back to a question that actually Mr. Marriott asked about, the board members, so is it by state law, or bylaw, that stipulates when a homeowner can join the board?
As soon as they own property. They can.
And so, I don't think that's what's being practiced.
Well, maybe, maybe not in reality, but under state law, that, that is what should be allowed. If you own property in a district, you are authorized to vote, and you are authorized to run for the board.
Okay.
Any property owner.
Mr. Vernon, is that how that's working?
That is not how that is working.
I didn't think so. So, okay, so that's a different discussion, probably for a different time, but just thought I'd raise that question.
No, you, you do have, I mean, there's certainly requirements under state law, and that's what should be guiding. I have heard, I guess rumors that people are being discouraged, or, you know, yeah, who knows what goes on?
Well, that what they're, what they're being told is, oh, there's not enough homeowners, you don't have enough to represent.
That's true on homeowners' associations.
It is on homeowners' associations, but that's two different bodies...
Right, right.
...of governing bodies. So, that's why I wanted to make sure that we understood the distinction between an HOA versus a metro district, and from that perspective, they're different.
If you, if you have a contract to purchase the property, you, you can vote, and you can run for the board.
Okay, well, that's good to know. So, okay. And then, my comment, so those were my two questions. My comment was, I really think that this is a great conversation, and that having more transparency around the metro, it's so confusing, even living in one, I still don't fully understand all of the, the moving parts of it. So I think the more we can talk about it, and the more we can shine a bright light on it, so that people who are choosing to move into these areas have some place to go for information. And it would be great if they could come to the city, and I'm not suggesting another department, but come to the city for answers and, and guidance around, okay, so what does this really mean to me? What do these, you know, number of mills mean to me, and who's getting that money? And, so I, again, I hope that we can just continue the dialogue around metro districts, and how we can help our citizens, especially the 13% who live in them, feel better about the taxes that they're paying. So, thank you.
Sounds like that'd be good work for the assessor's office, too, because that's where you get that tax notice that says, here's your number of mills, and this is what it's costing, and, and here's what you're allegedly getting for.
Yeah, I can offer that there are lots of places to get information, but a lot of it's bits and pieces along the way. I mean, these are public entities, and so when they file their debts, they have to publicly report their financials and all of that, but they're on websites that nobody knows that they're there. I mean, once you find them, yay, but we certainly hear you loud and clear on this.
All right. I don't see any other questions. Thank you. Mr. Devon, did you get what you needed from us for tonight?
Yes, and again, I want to appreciate the work that this team did to bring this matter forward. It's been a while coming, we had to set it aside for good reasons, but I do appreciate the work that they've done, and I really appreciate the feedback from the city council, and I think we're gonna take this feedback and, and work on changes to the service plan and to the model ordinance.
Good. Thank you all. Anything else, Mr. Devon?
Uh, no. The only thing I just want to mention is that we're going to be, I think, three weeks between now and the next time we have a meeting, so...
You'll miss us?
I, I will. I, I, all of us will miss you. But also want to urge you to read your weekly memos and other things, so we can keep you up to date on things.
Thank you. Everybody have a great Memorial Day next Monday. We stand adjourned.